At the meeting of the Oshkosh Council, would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Pack.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Palmary.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present six.
Would you all please rise now while council member? Pack, please just in the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance, which our students will help us with.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kids, come back for us. We have something for you. Now, let's turn to face mom and dad so they can take some pictures, any videos. And I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. What's your, you'll step back here a little bit. And then face mom and dad. I'm going to ask you your name, your age, where do you go to school, and your favorite subject. So we'll start with you.
Kayla Bear. I'm 10 and go to Reed Elementary.
And your favorite subject?
Art.
Okay, great. And here's a certificate for you, and thank you for helping us tonight. And Austin?
Austin Gunther. I'm 10. I go to Roosevelt, and my favorite subject is math.
Okay, great. And certificate for you. Now, you can stay and watch the council meeting, which should be a short one, or go home and do some homework. I think I know the answer. So thanks. The first on the agenda, I knew they'd leave. It's even raining out. First on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, but before I read it three times, which is mandatory, I'd like to have Tom Barron of East Central, or the long name is East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, give a presentation on the comp plan.
Thank you for having me.
Now, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for having me tonight. I have a presentation. So tonight, just wanted to give the council an update of the comp plan update process, an overview of it, some of our findings from the project, and a overview of the future land use map, and answer any questions you have. You said, "My name is Tom Barron. I'm a planner with the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Winnebago County is a member of East Central, therefore the city of Oshkosh is also a member. We provide planning services for an eight-county region, anywhere ranging from transportation planning to natural resource to economic development. Most things planning-related we are involved with." So we have worked with the city on updating their comprehensive plan. The state of Wisconsin does require that any community that makes land use decision have a adopted land use plan. They also require that the plan is updated at least every 10 years. The specifics of that update are up to the community. When we did this project, we looked at the background data. We did a full and major overhaul of that information, and we took a look at the goals and objectives and did some changes to them, but not as extensive as the background update. And we also created new maps for the project. The process for this, we started back in February of 2016. We are expecting that the update is adopted relatively shortly here. I think it's important to note that these projects don't happen by themselves. There's been a tremendous amount of activity throughout this plan update. It comes as a follow-up to a major zoning code update. There's been the downtown plan. As we all know, a lot of development projects happening within the city. As far as outreach, the comprehensive plan law does require a public participation plan be adopted with comprehensive plans. That's just good planning as well. It's just a bonus that it's a requirement. We did hold 17 project meetings. Those have all been open to the public. We've had a variety of representation in the comprehensive plan update committee, anywhere from residents to city staff to business representation. I think somewhat unique for this plan update is public health involvement in the Winnebago County Health Department. The school district was very involved in this along with UW-Oshkosh, so I think that certainly makes for a stronger plan. Outreach, we did a number of outreach activities. A lot of our outreach, though, also looked at existing activities that have recently took place at the city. A couple of years ago, East Central conducted a riverfront vision exercise called Let's Be Pioneers. We took input gathered from that. We did a lot of research and taking a look at a lot of the current planning efforts, as well as got out to the public as well. And here we have kind of a listing of our outreach activities in addition to looking at the existing documents. Just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of what we found. The comprehensive plans are arranged into nine elements or themes. They are in different chapters in the plan. The state does require that these topics are covered. I certainly won't go through and discuss all of these, but some takeaway summits. Water is a big deal for the city. Water quality, waterfront as an amenity, it's all important for the city. I think everybody on the council realizes that. Economic development, compared to a lot of our communities in the East Central region, you have a very aggressive economic development program that's yielded a lot of great results. I think another great benefit for the city is having UW-Oshkosh and Fox Valley Tech, as we mostly know now that talent attraction is a very important topic for many communities. Moving on to housing, there is a desire for all housing options within the city. In addition to that, curbside appeals entries were very important to the comprehensive plan update committee. This project does not act as a housing study. As with all the elements, it's to take a broad, kind of high-level overlook of it and consider how each of these elements fits in with future land use. Moving on to intergovernmental, I would say again with the communities we work with, the city has a very strong and proactive relationships with its governmental partners. The school district's a key player. Again, UW-Oshkosh and Fox Valley Tech fall into that category as well. Land use, currently there's about 17,690 acres within the city boundaries. When we project out for future land use projections, there certainly is land available to grow within the city without any annexation. We base those numbers on the Wisconsin Department of Administration. They provide population projections for us, and we calculate our land use scenarios with that data. Moving on to transportation, I think it's important to note that there are some major transportation corridors in the community that are important for moving goods, services, and people, but in addition that most of these do reside within neighborhoods and that this is an important feature of the city. Also, bike and pedestrian planning is very important. The comprehensive plan update committee had numerous discussions about how to incorporate bike and pedestrian planning into the comp plan update. Utilities and community facilities, this element takes a look at a lot of the services the city provides, a lot of the utilities that are provided by others for the city. Again, we go back to the Oshkosh School District being an important player for the community. And just of note that capacity issues are constantly being reviewed. We didn't notice anything out of the ordinary for how the city's operating. And that about wraps up what we found within the elements. Any questions I can answer at this point? Okay. Moving on, one other thing I wanted to note that we... Yes?
Are there any plans for the...
No, I'm sorry. No, no. It's not time for public input.
Okay, great. Okay. One other thing I wanted to address is that in this plan, we included a set of guiding principles. We haven't done this in other plans. East Central works on a number of comprehensive plan updates in any given year, and we thought this was an important decision-making activity for the plan commission as they go towards implementation of the comprehensive plan. You'll see here a list of these topics, along with parentheses, some of the elements or topics they may cover. Again, this is not a requirement. This is just something we felt was a good fit for the city and will aid plan commissions in their future decision-making. Onto the future land use map. As I stated earlier, we utilize Wisconsin Department of Administration projections. The methodology for preparing this, we use those projections. We also took a look at the surrounding towns and their future land use maps. We worked a lot with city staff. They made a lot of changes and markups to this, and then we had the comprehensive plan update committee review. In addition to that, we invited the neighboring towns and sanitary districts to come to an intergovernmental meeting to take a look at the future land use map. So we think we got a lot of input. I'm sure everybody can see this quite clearly, but there is copies included in the plan. Those copies are available for public review. But what you see here, generally speaking, are the different land use categories, the kind of the large outline that's somewhat circular in nature, that is the extraterritorial boundary or where the city can grow. I would also note within this map are protected areas in neighboring towns. Those are areas the city has agreements on how that land will be developed. With that, our next steps. Tonight, we're at the first reading for city council. We move forward to an October 9th for a second reading, and then possible ordinance adoption if the council is happy with the draft. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Tom. We will take a vote on this on the next council meeting, which is the 9th of October. Mr. Pack.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fitzpatrick, I'll throw this out to you. Mr. Davis, you may have the answer as well. Document is here. We all received it in our packet. Where can the citizens find a copy of the document, whether it be a hard copy? I'm sure we're not printing hard copies, but is there one at the library? Or where would hard copy be available, as well as is this document available on the...
The document is on the city's website. The same document that the council members have is on the city's website, and we do distribute hard copies. We have them at, here at City Hall, we have them at the library as well, just as you suggested.
So the document is available for the public? So, you know, if they want to get it, they can get it?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Tom. I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to see that we have started incorporating more of the public health information, or public health as part of our comprehensive planning that was for a number of years missing and absent, so progressive in that regard. I did have a question on our public participation. So out of those 17 public participation opportunities, do you have a rough idea how many people attended to contribute?
It was primarily committee members. The committee members were, I believe, open to whoever would like to participate within that. They did make up a variety of, some were plant commissioners. Like I said, we had UW-Oshkosh representation, the school district. Most of these folks were residents of the city as well. We started out each meeting with public comment period as well.
Yeah, I think the most interest that we received on it was from the towns, actually.
The towns?
Yeah, the towns that showed up. Because the most interest that we get on our comp plan from the adjacent units of government is regarding the land use plan. Because when we go forward and administer that land use plan, the county has to adopt it, so they're very concerned with what our land use recommendations are versus their land use recommendations are. And in this particular, in this particular comprehensive plan update, I think we had a pretty good meeting, an intergovernmental meeting, where all the, pretty much all the units of government, all the adjacent units of government showed up, and they're very happy that we incorporated their, most of their land use recommendations onto our comprehensive plan map. There's a couple of areas in a couple of towns where we couldn't get to an agreement. We still thought that our land use plan had a better recommendation for the city of Oshkosh, but at the end of the day, we get a lot of good positive comments from the adjacent towns. We also went out to the town of Black Wolf, met with them personally to talk about our land use, our land use map, as we did in the town of...
Bill and Cracker. Yes. And I guess I just also wanted to share that I can appreciate a little bit of a delay, given that we've had several major other plans that relate, as well as other activities, so better to delay it a little bit than put the cart before the horse. So, thank you, and thanks to all the members on the steering committee that put a lot of time and effort into this as well.
Okay, again, thank you, Tom. Will we see you in two weeks to answer other questions? This is a public hearing that does require three readings, but there will be no votes, so we'll begin with the first reading, ordinance 18-490, adopt city of Oshkosh comprehensive plan update 2014. Second reading, ordinance 18-490, adopt city of Oshkosh comprehensive plan update 2040. And third and final reading, ordinance 18-490, adopt city of Oshkosh comprehensive plan update 2014.
2040.
2040. Thank you. Next, we have citizen statements to council. Pam, is anyone registered to speak?
Yes, we have Richard Wolfe, 531 Jackson Street, apartment number two.
Let me first unread the guidelines. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements element of five minutes must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electionary. So that, it's looking, come forward now.
Who was the, who was registered?
Richard Wolfe, 531 Jackson Street, apartment number two.
I do not see anyone coming forward, so move on to the consent agenda items. These are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Stack recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, is anyone registered to speak to anything?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 18494 on our specific implementation plan for the new electronic message center, 3530 Omni Drive. Mr. Verch, please.
Sure.
If you could, if you would, just share, this is a request to expand that about three times the size of what we would normally allow. Can you just provide some information on that?
Correct. This is a PD request to expand the size of the, of their EMC. Their stated reasons were that they needed a larger, they needed a larger EMC because of the distance away from the highway and the, and the track, and the speed of the traffic going in that particular area. That was, we discussed that the plan commission, plan commission recommended for it, so that's why, that's why we're here. That's why, we kind of supported it because we did see, we did see the rationale for that reasoning.
I believe that...
In this part, in this portion of the corridor, when it, it's a little, it's less congested in this, in this portion of the corridor, so the traffic is speeding along at a much higher clip than when you get below into the core part of 41 between, say, 21 and 20.
I believe if I read correctly, the plan commission also discussed something related to the brightness that would be allowed?
Correct.
But that our code is maybe a little bit vague on that, so is there any follow-up on that discussion?
We have a code on that. They have to automatically dim, and I think we put, it's either in the code or we put that as a condition in here, and I don't have the conditions pulled up. Looking for it right now. We feel, we feel our code is strong enough at this point, that it's, you're not going to create an issue like you have on the south side of town where that EMC is in the county, or on the north side as you get into the town of maybe Neenah there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Actually, it's good that Fitz is sitting, sitting right there tonight. I've got a question on 18496, the Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance agreement. I'm pleasantly surprised and happy that it came in, obviously, at a, at a 0% increase. Good work negotiating on that.
Thank you.
Can you give us a little background or a little more feedback on maybe some of the things that they found positive that we've been doing over the last year or two? I mean, obviously, we moved to Blue Cross last year, the health clinic and things like that.
Right, yes. I'd be happy to. Actually, we had a good discussion with Anthem and also our consultant-associated risk and benefits consulting, and they talked to us about the interest that all the vendors had in the city of Oshkosh. One of the common themes that was brought forward was the idea that they thought that we were very aggressive in our wellness programming, and also the fact that several years ago, the council saw fit to invest in our Three Waves Health Clinic and Wellness Center. It's something that initially, there weren't a lot of communities that were participating in, but the council was willing to take a chance, I think, on that, and I think it's really helped us organizationally, and also, not only internally, but also with other vendors. I think they see that as a real benefit, and I don't know how technically attractive this is, but they told us that they wanted to have us as a client so they could shop our experience and what we've done to other clients. So I think that really speaks well of the commitment that the council made, and also the seriousness that our employees take in terms of trying to keep our health costs down. So just to provide a little more background on that, when we, for the folks that may not have seen the initial budget hearing that we had, we thought that we would be coming in with about a 2.5% increase, which I thought was pretty good, but when we discussed it with them a little bit further, they decided to offer a zero increase. And then additionally, fund $200,000 worth of our clinic costs, $20,000 towards our health risk assessments, and then also provide six sessions of VAP with a value of about $14,000. So we're very pleased with that, and we're hopeful that council will approve.
Well, no, it shows the investments previous councils and hopefully future ones make, are paying dividends, literally, and saving us on the premiums. That's all I have on 496. I do have a question for Finance Director Larson on 18491, if she wouldn't mind coming up. I know we emailed a little bit today regarding some of the fund transfers and just an explanation, I guess on the Leach one more specifically. It sounds, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, but it sounds as though we're correcting, we're doing an accounting transfer to correct a transaction or a balance that's still on the books from a 2010 transaction. Is that, am I understanding it correctly?
Correct. This was prior to my arrival, but there used to be a management company that managed the events at the Leach. It transitioned into city management, and we needed, we needed to purchase some of their equipment to continue the concessions.
But we have a fund with a, an unfunded liability or an unfunded balance on the books for the last seven years is a little concerning.
Correctly. This is something that has come in our annual audit. It does require an entry annually, and what the thought process was is, as the Leach developed, there was hopes that some of that fund balance could be recovered through additional revenues or unencumbered funds. However, as you can see through the progression of the years, that has not been successful. So rather than continuing to show that deficit balance, we're asking the council for the fund transfer.
Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No further questions. Would you please take the roll?
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Period six.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move, we'll move on to pending ordinances. There are three. The first is ordinance 18-499, adopt ordinance to regulate the operation of commercial quad, quad recycles, basically pedal pubs. Did anyone sign up from the audience to speak to this?
No one has signed up.
All right. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Mugrower.
Yes, if, Ms. Lawrence, and I just have a clarification, just in the staff memo, and maybe it's more for Alan Davis, but it mentions regarding the purchase of beer and the consumption of beer for this. "At the planned tour stops," and I quote, "the passengers may consume on licensed premises. The pedal pub passengers may also buy and consume additional prepackaged beer on the pedal pub for the duration of the pedal pub tour." But that goes against later in the ordinance where it says we can't buy on the pedal pub. Am I mis...
I didn't put it clearly in the memo. They'd have to buy that beer at the premise, not on the pedal pub.
And bring it on with them.
And bring it with them, yes.
That was my only question on that.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thanks, Mayor. Just, I guess, we talked briefly about this when this was first brought up, the hours of operation of the pedal pub that would extend beyond dusk to 10:30 PM. There is some reference in here to protecting residential areas from potential noise and other, maybe literal or harmful effects. So it's my understanding each one of these routes would come back to council for approval. Is that correct?
That's my expectation. We'd have an application for the license. The license would be reviewed by city staff, including transportation, police, community development, et cetera. And then the license would actually have to be issued by the council, so I expect the council will have a complete application to review, and that would include the routes and when those routes would be used.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Davis, then, is this basically falls under our special event policy also? Since it's got to be approved and it's going to go through all these different committees, is it kind of on that same level in a sense?
Well, it gets the same level of review, but it's a different, it's not a special event. This would be something that would continue for the entire year, weather permitting, so we'd certainly bring that same information and review to the, to the council. We'd still have the same concerns with the quad recycle, but we'd present that to the council, and in the same way, council approves special events, you'd also have to approve the license for the quad recycle.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, the routes have yet, have not yet been finalized, correct?
We'd actually have to receive an official application. We're actually, we've developed an application form for any quad recycle operators to submit to community development, and then that would include the routes. Based on our conversations, I expect the routes will be a mixture of commercial and residential, depending on the time of day. We'll be looking very closely at that. As I indicated earlier, all those routes would have to be reviewed and then presented to council for the exact route and the time of that route being used.
Okay. Then would it be premature to have the applicant come before us now? He was at the bedboard meeting explaining some of the initial thinking and routes, or is it too early to have him?
It's probably a little too early, since we don't have a pending application, but I expect during your review, having the applicant attend and explain anything that the council would want to hear, I think that would be wholly appropriate for the council to request.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Mugrower.
I apologize. I did have one more question. Unfortunately, Chief Smith's not here. Unfortunately, Chief Smith's not here, and I forgot to ask him in advance, but hopefully, or maybe you can address it. Has to do with checking IDs and things like that. Obviously, the driver of this vehicle is not selling alcohol, but they're consuming it while operating his vehicle. And is there any concern as to underage users consuming alcohol while on this contraption?
Yes, there would be. I would have to defer to Chief Smith as to how they would expect the operator to verify all the legal drinking age for the participants. Does Mrs. Larson have anything off the top of her head on that?
Or Lawrenceon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lawrenceon?
No, I would also refer to Chief Smith. I'm sure they'll be concerned and they'll want to be checking that, but how he intends to-
The logistics of it.
-to do that, I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Crowsey.
I read that the driver of the bike only has to be 18 years old. Is there any legality to checking IDs if you're not 21? You just have to be 18 to check the ID?
You can wiggly bartend at eight.
You can bartend at eight, yeah.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
I guess just a follow-up, and I'm not sure how the quantity was, like, determined. So they can carry on 36 ounces per passenger. Do I understand that's, like, between each stop or in total?
At any given point in time, they could have 36 ounces, no more. So I suppose theoretically, if you can drink that much, you could bring on 36 ounces, stop at the first stop, get another 36 ounces. It's at any given point in time, you are limited to 36 ounces.
I know we don't have the routes established yet, but do we have any sense of what the applicant's intention is in terms of the length or the distance or time that these take place?
In general terms, they'd be on the South Shore, visiting the different possible stops, the granary, Fifth Ward Brewing, the arena, things of that nature. And you can get most places on commercial roads. Potentially, there could be some cut-throughs on some residential pieces, but that's what we'd want to look at very carefully.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, we have a motion in a second. Would you please take the roll?
Pat.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Period six.
Next is ordinance 18-500, change council meeting date from November 13 to November 14, 2018. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you please take a roll?
Pat.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cummings.
Aye.
Period six.
Next is ordinance 18-501, cancel December 25, 2018 council meeting. Did anyone register to speak to this ordinance?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take a roll?
Pat.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Period six.
New ordinances, the first is ordinance 18-502, approve closure of Oshkosh Avenue from Pinocchio Street to Fox Street. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading. Is there anyone from the public that has signed up?
No one has signed up.
Councilmember Peck.
I would move to waive the rules and adopt on first reading per staff recommendation.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the role on waiving the rules?
Pat.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Period six.
I'll vote on the ordinance 18-502, approve closure of Oshkosh Avenue from-
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
She won one quick question.
Councilman Mugerower.
Can you confirm, Mr. Abbe, if they've posted signs already for potential closure or when those will be going up, if they haven't gone up already?
The advance message boards went up yesterday.
Perfect. My only question, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Just one question, Mr. Abbe. So this contractor is also finishing up on the Oregon Street project. Are we pretty confident, are they pretty confident they're going to wrap that up and everything's going to work in the timing that's anticipated? Because we've got another one of these completion estimates of two weeks. And just wondering if that's pretty, I mean, obviously unforeseen things can occur, but-
Right, it's actually, you know, per intersection is two weeks, so we're anticipating the closure will be about three to four weeks total. The utility work on the Oregon Street project is virtually complete, so they have already, you know, any of those crews are already overworking on the sanitary project in the Oshkosh Avenue area and have been for several weeks already. So they won't be having to bring any additional crews in, it's just the crews that are working on that project are getting to the point where they need to be getting ready to cross Oshkosh Avenue.
Thank you.
I see no one wishing to ask any questions, would you please take the roll?
Pat.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugerower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Period six.
Ordinance 18-503, approve zone change from Central Mixed Use District CMU to Two Flat Residential-10, TR-10 District, 22 West 8th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval, but there'll be no formal action taken on this ordinance this evening. We're moving to council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. The first is industrial parkland and marketing workshop, October 9, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. in this room, the room next door. Does that work for most of us?
Works for me as of now.
Okay, me too. Budget workshops, October 29 and 30, 2018, from 5, or from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., both days, room 404. We're all on board for those, I believe.
As of now.
See classification and compensation study update to be determined. Fitz, is that your-
Yeah, Mark asked if we could just hold off on that so we could initiate some of these other workshops in advance, and I'm okay with that. It's the information that we're going to be presenting to council's pretty basic, there aren't going to be a lot of changes. So I think it's okay if we hold off. I don't believe there's going to be any significant budget impact, so I think it's okay to advance these other items that are more important.
Okay, thank you. Next is discuss municipal fax 18 at the October 19 council meeting. Next, we have recommendations on Oregon Street between 8th Avenue and South Park Avenue lane configurations, geometric and parking layout. We have Mr. Gode here.
Yes, I'm just trying to get a couple more files to open, so if you can bear with me.
Bear with you.
Maybe while Steve is opening those files, you know, we really would like to get some direction from council on how you'd like us to go with this. I think Steve is planning to, just to provide a broad overview and then provide some options for you to consider. So we're hoping that, you know, after you have an opportunity to listen to what he has to say, you can maybe give us, point us in the right direction.
And after Steve makes his presentation, we'll overlap to anyone who signed up to speak to this issue.
Right.
All right, we'll try to go with this here. We'll let it go from that, and I may have to just adjust a couple of minutes, we open. All right, thank you. What I pointed to is I'm just going to give a brief overview of everything we've got so far, the background of the situation from the pre-construction to existing, move into the factors that influenced the design, the details of the current layout compared to the pre-construction layout for parking stalls, the location of the current parking lots that the city has, public parking lots, review of the two options to add additional parking spots, and then a summary from the meetings that we had with the business owners and the traffic and parking board. If anybody has any questions while I'm going through this, please feel free to interrupt and ask them at that point in time, but I'll try to get through this relatively quickly. A little background, prior to construction in the area from just south of South Park Avenue to 8th Avenue, there were approximately 68 parking spaces/stalls. Some of these were individually marked, others were just areas on street where parking was allowed, and it depended on how efficiently people parked as to how many stalls were available. Post-construction, there are about 47 spaces/stalls available. Again, some of the areas are just open parking, others are individually marked. The largest reductions occurred in the blocks north and south of the signalized intersection. So the blocks immediately north and south of 9th Avenue and South Park Avenue are the blocks that had the most significant impacts for parking laws. Factors that influenced the layout and the configuration, the biggest one was addressing lane configurations to try to improve the truck turning movements. There's been a long history of signal knockdowns at the intersections as larger vehicles have tried to make the corner around the intersections, specifically at 9th Avenue. The right turn, if you may recall, the right turn lane was tucked extremely close to the curb lane. Expecting a semi to be able to make that turn and stay within the other half of 9th Avenue was impossible for them not to be taking up many, several of the lanes. 9th Avenue and Oregon Street are both truck routes through the area. The next factor was increasing the stacking distance at the intersections. The design allowed for approximately 75 feet of stacking or three passenger vehicles for one semi-length, four in there. Previously, the stacking distances were anywhere from roughly 60 to 75 feet at the two intersections. Next impact was extending the transitions or the taper lengths for how fast a vehicle needed to move over to the side as they were coming down through there, bringing those up to current design standards of approximately a 10 to 1 ratio where they previously were much steeper than that. And the last couple of impacts were just making sure that we complied with the state requirements to have parking stalls 15 feet away from crosswalks, four feet away from driveways, and then having the wider-than-standard parking stalls out there with the striping in order to try to keep lane widths at a more traditional lane width, so they weren't exceedingly wide and would want to increase speeds. We widened the parking lane width a little bit, and that impacted a couple of parking stalls. So going down by a block-by-block comparison, if we can pull up the PDFs that are on the screen here, great, thank you. On the first block from 14th Avenue to South Park, the west side was previously unmarked, it will be unmarked following construction, or unmarked when the section completes, this area isn't quite complete yet, and lost approximately three spaces. The east side was unmarked, it's proposed to be unmarked, and lost approximately two spaces. So that's this block over here. Moving to the block between South Park and 12th Avenue, west side was previously unmarked, it's currently unmarked, lost approximately three parking spaces in this block. And then on the east side, was previously unmarked, currently is marked, we have the same parking area as was before in this area here. So the no parking area was here, remained the same, this area just was not, did not have parking stall marks before, and people were encroaching on driveways and parking in some ways, so we designated those stalls. In the area from 12th Avenue to 11th Avenue, the west side previously had seven marked stalls, post-construction has seven marked stalls, so no change. The east side had six stalls marked previously. Currently, we have four stalls, we lost two in the block between 12th Avenue and 11th Avenue. Moving to the next sections here, from 11th Avenue to 10th Avenue, the west side previously had eight marked stalls, currently has seven marked stalls, so we lost one space. And the east side previously had seven marked stalls, currently has 10 marked stalls. We were able to actually add three stalls in this area when a property owner did not want the driveway put back, that kind of led to a dead-end alley and wasn't utilized for anything, so that allowed us to add three parking stalls in this area. From 10th Avenue to 9th Avenue, the west side previously had 10 stalls, it currently has four stalls, so it was six stalls. So this is a block that had the largest number of stalls reduced. And the east side previously had four marked stalls, currently has three marked stalls. The ninth, the block from 9th to 8th, which is the last block that was impacted by the project, previously had four marked stalls on each side, currently each side only has one marked stall, so each side lost three of the spaces. Jumping to the, so that was basically a summary of the pre-construction conditions to the post-constructions as things currently sit. There are numerous public parking lots in the area that serve these businesses in the area. The 8th Street Lot, which is located on the north side of 8th Avenue, approximately 100 feet east of Oregon Street, has 24 parking stalls in it, nine of those are permit stalls, so there are 15 essentially two- or four-hour parking stalls within that lot. The 9th Avenue Lot, which is located here on the west side of 9th Avenue, or west side of Oregon Street, pardon me, between 9th and 10th Avenue, is directly behind the block that had the largest number of parking stalls lost with the reconfiguration. This parking lot does have a mid-block access to Oregon Street, contains 27 parking stalls, five of those are leased, and 22 of those are basically available for timed parking. The last lot in the area is the 10th Avenue Lot, located on the south side of 10th Avenue, about 120 feet east of Oregon Street. That lot has 58 stalls, 13 of those are permit stalls, so there are 45 open available stalls. Currently, this parking lot is only gravel. It does have a historically low use and hasn't been high on the priority list to be reconstructed with a CIP. However, if use is increased, that certainly would move that lot up to be reconstructed as a parking lot. Finally, the options that we have for kind of going through and increasing the parking. We have developed two options to, and they both build off of each other. The first option adds five stalls by adding narrower parking stalls at, in the painted-out transition areas as you approach or leave the intersections. Now, narrower is a little bit of a difficult word here. The stalls would still be eight feet wide, which is a standard parking width for a car on a parallel parking situation. They would be that wide, they would just not be as wide as the ones that are marked a little wider as we go down the street in the different areas. This option would add one stall on each side in the blocks between 8th and 9th, and again on 9th and 10th, and then would add one stall between South Park and 12th on the west side. So this option adds five parking stalls back in the area. Option two builds on option one, and I'm sorry, I'll jump to the other one here and show where these are. So two of the added stalls are here, just south of 9th Avenue, and then we have two more added here at just south of 8th Avenue, and then there was one on the previous sheet located here, just north of South Park Avenue. Option two builds on that option, keeping the narrower parking stalls, those five additional stalls, and adds eight additional stalls by reducing the queuing storage length at the intersection. Intersections are currently marked at about 75 feet of queuing or storage at the intersection, enough for approximately three passenger vehicles or a semi, and still allowing vehicles to maneuver past and get in the appropriate lanes. This option reduces that down to 50 feet in all directions at any of the intersections. So you're down to about two passenger cars in length or less than a semi. Anything more than that, you'll start infringing on vehicles' ability to transition and get in the correct lanes as they approach the intersection. This option essentially adds one stall on each side of North and South 9th Avenue and the South Park Avenue intersection. So looking at the map here, again, we had a stall added in option one here, we've added two more stalls, one on either side of Oregon Street here, just north of South Park Avenue. And moving to the next block, let me make that a little larger. The next block, section up, so we have the original stalls that were added here, and under option one, we've added two more stalls, one on each side of Oregon Street here, and then between 8th and 9th Avenue, we had the option one stalls, and we've added two more stalls in here by shrinking this storage length from the intersection down. We had, we've had a couple of meetings with, one with the business owners and one with the traffic and parking board. At the business owner meeting, the general consensus was that they would like some parking back. They recognized that not all the parking back was realistic, but they did want some parking back. Their feeling is that customers want to park in front of their stores, be able to see the stores from where they are parked. The option of adding wayfinding signs, the blue signs with the white P on it that you see in a lot of cities, was discussed. The business owners were definitely in favor of that, adding those signs on Oregon Street to direct customers that the off-street parking were available nearby and where to head for those. The traffic and parking board meeting recommended that leaving the street currently as it was marked. Some of their, they felt it was important to maintain, to improve the truck turning movements at the intersections, especially given that 9th and Oregon are truck routes. Maintaining adequate queuing length was also an important factor to try to help traffic keep moving through the area. keep moving through the area. And they also felt that the eight-foot wide stalls would be, and I'm struggling with the right word, not necessarily a hazard, but maybe more accident prone, just because they're going to be a much tighter situation with vehicles moving down through there. So that, again, they recommended leaving the markings as they currently are in the field or proposed for the few that aren't in yet. That's the end of what I had prepared to run through, so if there are any questions, happy to answer them.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things, we have three types of roads in the city, correct? Arterial, collectors, and local roads, right?
Those are the three base plus.
And Oregon Street's considered a arterial road, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that means basically that it carries a large volume of traffic.
Yes.
Right? And you, you had already said it was a truck, truck route, Ninth and Oregon, correct? And there's parking, when, park, public parking within mid-block, basically to most of the businesses, correct? With, where the parking lots are? I mean, they're not in mid-block, but I mean, depend what business you're going to, you, you gotta only walk a half a block from the parking lot to the business.
From any of the, from any of the middle of the parking lots, it's, it's less than four hundred and fifty feet to, to any of the businesses. So if you can park in one of the lots, you can be within four hundred and fifty feet of any of the businesses from the public parking lots. Walking the, along the right of way, not, not, not as the crow flies.
Okay. All right, thank you for now, I'll have some comments later.
Councilmember Crozey.
I had two questions. The first one, was a restaurant south of the border, did they ask the city if they could buy the lot behind them for additional parking for the restaurant?
There were discussions of the lot, I don't recall specifically if that was addressed.
There were some discussions going back to an old South Shore development plan that showed additional parking. Yes, there was a question raised as to whether as the private businesses, they could purchase the lots to convert them to parking lots for use.
And if I may, if I may jump in here, I was at the, the business meeting, and yes, indeed, it was asked if that lot could be, if the business owners wanted to, if they wanted to purchase that empty land. It was, said yes, if you wanna, if you wanna purchase that land, that's fine, bring forward an offer to the city, bring forward your, your proposal. So there, there was the question asked, and it was basically, yes, if that's the way you would like to proceed, then go ahead, bring it forward, and we'll see how we can go from there. So yes, to answer the question, it was, the, the businesses asked and the city said, let's discuss.
And my other question was, on Oregon turning onto Ninth, where we extended the lane for the semis to turn right, do they still have to turn into the left, do they have to go into the left lane to still make that right turn lane? Because we lost three spots there, so I mean, if they're going into the left lane, why did we take the spots away?
The, the right turn, they would, could still potentially infringe what the big event, benefit there. The largest benefit is actually the eastbound Ninth Avenue to northbound Oregon Street. Can I make that turn by staying and staying on the, their portion of Oregon Street? By sliding the center line farther to the west of that location, we dramatically improved that eastbound to northbound movement. That was where a major signal knockdown was routinely happening.
Councilmember Mugerhour.
Before we get into too much discussion for us, were we opening this up for public comment before we started directing or no?
This is just questions off his presentation.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Why, in front of Saint, Saint Vinnie's, so previously it wasn't marked at all, but people parked there? Or was it, or was it marked no parking?
It was, it's, portions of it are loading zone and portions of it are just on-street parking. There are not delineated spaces, it was just open on-street parking.
Okay.
Again, depending on how people parked, how efficient it would be.
Okay, that was one, that's my one question regarding that.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. One question, and I don't need to know the exact number, but when Main, North Main Street was reconstructed, there was a significant loss of parking, correct? Because of the bump outs?
Yes, there was a loss of parking along Main Street. I don't recall the numbers, but with the bump outs and again, lane transitions, there were, was a loss of parking on, on-street parking.
Okay, thank you.
I drove down Oregon this, I think this noon, and I watched a semi trying to turn right onto Ninth, and my God, they were, they were blocking the whole intersection. Is there any way that we can not designate Ninth as a truck route and send them down South Park? Is there anything that the state is going to tell us we can or cannot do? But it was blocking traffic on Oregon going north and south, and anyone coming west on Ninth had to wait for this semi. It looks like accidents waiting to happen in the future.
I'd be curious if that was kind of an oversized semi or if it was more, one of the more urban sized semis, but.
It was big. It was a semi.
So, they do come, supersized trailers unfortunately. South Park is not currently a truck route, it has been utilized as an alternate truck route at points in times. Ninth Avenue does provide the direct connection from Forty-One to downtown. I don't believe there would be anything as far as the state would be concerned that would preclude us from making South Park a truck route. I think that would be entirely up to the city of Oshkosh to do that. Neither of those sections of roadway are under state jurisdiction.
Okay. And then one other question, a comment kind of following up to Mr. Peck said that, I recall we had the Walker study done of our park in the central city, they said it's, we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem. And it seems there's a lot of, there's a lot of parking spaces in that area, they're not on Oregon. And the follow-up on that, when Main Street was redone, I go up and down Main Street quite a bit, and there's always empty spaces on Main Street. So we've got, there is parking there, correct? Off-street parking, parking lots.
The off-street parking is there, and there is on-street parking in various areas of Oregon Street and the site, and various areas of the side streets contain on-street parking as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Mugerhour.
One follow-up, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the current layout showing the Tenth, Ninth, Eighth intersections.
This sheet?
Yeah, that'll do. So between Ninth and Eighth, you have it marked on both top and bottom, east and west sides, four stalls pre-construction, one space current. Where's the one current space? What am I missing?
Right now, it's a little difficult to see, there, it's, there's one here, and then the other one is located here.
Okay, because that looked to me as though it was the same as the spaces in front of Saint Vincent's where it wasn't marked. This, this shows the same way, the, the same large rectangle box and not the dashes. That's where.
Correct, that is what is currently out there, we do want to get that changed to dashes, it was an oversight in the plans as we were pushing them out the door, that the marking was incorrect on the plans.
Thank you for the clarification.
If there are no further questions from council, I would ask a city clerk if we had anyone that registered to speak to this issue.
Yes, Jennifer Byer, fifteen twenty-two Oregon Street.
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment, I think it's very important for the business to have some parking, and to shoot down from sixty-eight to forty-seven was kind of a big decrease, so if you could throw a few back, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. And I do understand about the semi turning point, but I would think there's a, there's a happy medium there, that you can, everybody can have something. I guess that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Pam.
Sandy Zabel, thirty-seven sixty-three Candish Harbor.
Hi, I'm here tonight to urge you all to put back the parking or some parking on Oregon Street that was removed from our street. One of the main reasons for me, for buying my properties that was on Oregon was the street, the convenience and for the customers that come to my store. What I do is refinish furniture. It's very hard to move a dresser to any one of the parking that's on Oregon. I can't close my store, usher all the street, or all the customers that are in my building while I go try to deliver a dresser down one of the parking lots that you have on Oregon or anywhere else that's on, down Oregon. The road stayed the same width, which was wider than Main Street. Main Street has parking on both sides, we don't. We have one spot on our side of the road. I can deliver furniture to my customers that come in my road or in my store, I can deliver a piece of furniture to the road, to the other side of my road. I can't deliver it to parking lots down Tenth, across the street on Ninth, I can risk it, but I'm leaving my store unmanned. I am one person that runs my business, that's it. I can't deliver it to the parking lot that's down by south of the border. In the time that I've been in my store for which is almost three years now, I have yet to see a semi try to turn left on Oregon towards South Main Street. Turning right up to Ninth Avenue, yes, they have to go all the way over, almost into the other side of Oregon Street to make the right-hand turn. To compare small business shopping to a shopping mall or big box stores where people are parking far away and walking is like comparing apples to oranges. People going to malls or into a big box store already expect to walk. For shoppers going to small businesses, they expect street parking. As I am now expected to pay for all the dark stores, I need all the street parking that I can get. On-street parking is also a deterrent, or on-street parking is also a good deterrent to slow down speeding for those using bikes and crosswalks. In conclusion, small business is the heart of a city and is a great attraction for travelers, but without street, on-street parking, small businesses will lose out. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam.
Robert Maza, fifteen fifty-eight County Road I.
Hello, and thank you for letting me talk. I emailed a few of you or several of you, and I really appreciate the fact that somebody took the time to respond. I probably have the most to lose here, not that everybody on Oregon Street is important. And even the important part of what I'm seeing is the empty businesses that are down there are starting to fill up. Now, you take some of the parking away, it's not going to help. The other thing is, is they're saying there's parking on these parking lots that are out there, they're not accessible to us, and when times are busy, those parking spots are not there. The one that really would benefit from us is the one on the west side behind Ninth Street, or on the, on the south side of Ninth Street. And that one, I think they're saying is twenty spots in there, I've never seen more than a few empty at any busy time of the day, haven't. And I don't think that they've done any studies that show that. When I have events which happen all week, all winter long, Friday and Saturday, we take up like both sides of the street, all the way down on Eighth Street, and then pack our parking lot, and there's nothing left. And the, the things that we do in my business, and my store is twenty-four thousand square feet on Oregon Street, we've been able to survive, I've been there for fifteen years. We've been able to survive because people have had access to our building. They don't come in there with, without massive quantities of stuff, they come in there, we don't want to run racing programs all weekend long, and they pack it, and that brings people down there. And we, you know, we send guys across the street, we have people at shop next door while they're shopping at our store. All these, all of us want to survive down there, we don't want big empty spots. And the reality of it is, is I bought that building because there was parking down there, and now they're taking it away. I mean, realistically, spending that kind of money on a spot that's losing its, its upfront parking is, is ridiculous. I mean, it's going to devalue the property, it'll make it harder to sell when I want to sell it, and it's, and then having more empty spots down there isn't going to help. The other thing about, that was just mentioned is, is the fact that people aren't walking. Well, if there's a bunch of empty businesses down there, they're not going to want to walk down there, you know. You know, Main Street is starting to fill up, there's some spots down there, they're doing events down there to get people to walk down. With a bunch of empty buildings down there, they're not going to want to walk a block and a half away. The other problem that we have is, there's buildings down there that have a business, a spot upstairs, they have one parking spot. And some of those buildings have two businesses being run on. Then they're, they have one spot to park, so there's side street parking except for during the day when we're open for business because it's, it's occupied by employees. So the reality of it is, is I would love to see that these other proposals be brought up so that at least, and, and we're, we're probably down to one spot according to what it says on Oregon Street, being Queen Eighth and Ninth Street, that's like the worst place to lose all at, absolutely the worst place to lose. And I, and I, and I don't disagree with the fact that anytime you get in and out of your car, it's a risk, it's a hazard, whatever, and I, I agree with that, but the reality of it is, is it's very necessary for us to do business. And we really want to stick around with it. I'm in town, I've been in town for fifty-five years, I've been doing business here for twenty-five. I, I just, I, I just dread the thought of not being able to do what we do there. So, and, and we do, we, and Sandy's nice of our neighbor for the last few years, and we do fight for parking spots. It's busy, it's busy down there on the weekends. So, with that on and off, I just want to thank you for, for hearing me out.
Thank you. Pam.
No one else is registered.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. Regarding direction, I would direct us to, number one, take care of safety and traffic movements based on the fact that these are arterial streets. And that public safety is our first, is our, is the first goal that we have as a community, is the public safety. Number two, try and restore as much parking as possible. Maintaining again, the safety of the, the citizens, I mean, Mr., is it Maza? Just indicated that, you know, I don't remember the exact words, but you were like, you know, you were concerned about people getting out of their car, but then the next comment was, but we need the, we need as much parking as we can. We're going to have to find that balance of, of where we're at. I don't think that we're going to be able to restore all the parking, again, Main Street lost significant, a fair amount of parking when Main Street was reconstructed. So, that's my direction. Am I clear enough? Does, is that what?
It has to be council.
Okay, but I'm just saying that, no, I understand, but I'm, I'm just, if there's any questions that, that need to be clarified about what I'm saying, then please.
I, I think staff's hope was that we would have direction as to implementing either part of the options, either option one, option two, some blend in between, or if we're directed to go back to the drawing board and try to come up with something else, so be it. But given the time of year, once we have the, have a decision, we do, we'll need to come back to council for modifying the ordinance for the parking areas and then get the paint down on the pavement. It's nearing October first, we're hoping to be back at council for the next meeting with the ordinance recommendation with a requesting of waiving of the rules so that we can get this in yet this year.
All right, and then just one question, Mr. Collins, I know that, that wayfinding signs were discussed at the, the business owners' meetings, where do we stand on that? And I think I remember that we haven't been able to put some signage up because until this issue gets addressed.
Correct, yeah, I mean, that's definitely an option, and it's something that, you know, the business owners expressed some interest in, and Traffic Review was okay with that too, that's definitely something that we can do. There are some signs down there, there's one that directs people to the Tenth Avenue parking lot on Tenth, and then there's one on Ninth that directs where the Ninth parking lot is, it says public parking. However, I don't have, see a reason why we couldn't put some of the Universal P signs on Oregon that would direct people to those parking lots. So yeah, but we definitely, we're waiting until we get some direction on what we're going to do here. I think what our, just to further what Mr. Gordy said, I think what we were hoping for direction was one of the three options, to leave it like it is, to go with option one or to go with option two. I know that engineering staff worked on this, you know, over the last couple of months, and that's the three options that were also presented to Traffic Review Advisory Board. So we were hoping to get direction on one of those three items, or three options. The reasoning, like Mr. Gordy said, is generally, street paint doesn't adhere when it's sixty degrees or lower, so we're kind of at that threshold now where, you know, we need to get it, probably whatever we're going to do, we need to get done in the next few weeks. So as he mentioned, the hope was to get direction today, and then we'll prepare the ordinance for the next council meeting, and then after that- ordinance for the next council meeting, and then after that, then we would direct the contractor to take care of whatever painting markings we need to do there. And then at that time too, depending on what your recommendation is, we could also work on getting some signage installed. We haven't, to make an ordinance enforceable, it has to be first in the code book, and then secondly, it has to be signed. We haven't signed Oregon Street yet, just because of this issue that's out there.
Councilmember Mugawar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got, I've got several comments. But if you want direction from me, I want option two. We're not going to get all the, all the stalls back. I think we all recognize that, businesses recognize that. But it's a pretty solid compromise into trying to get all them back. One, this is not Main Street, so we need to stop comparing it to Main Street. Main Street, you have dual access to most of those businesses, front and back, from the river all the way up to Parkway at least, if not through Irving, on the, on the west side of those properties. Mr. Peck knows, he's, he's got property up in there, with the studio there. So, you cannot compare Main Street to Oregon for the full length. You don't have dual access on all of those, all those buildings. Yes, you do have front and, front and back access for the portions between 9th and 10th, and some, some other extending ones sparingly, but it's not the same thing. Two, I respect the Traffic Review Advisory Board's opinion, but their purview is trying to give us direction as to traffic safety standards, not what's best for the business community and the citizens of Oshkosh in general. Their purview is traffic only. Of course, they're going to suggest that we make this, we reduce it and improve, improve traffic flow. That's fully under their purview, and I wouldn't expect anything less than that. But I disagree with their, their suggestion, and we need to add as many spots back as possible. Two, or I guess third, with the sentiments and the comments coming from this council recently regarding dark stores and big boxes, and even some disdain for some of those big boxes that come here and, and take up shop, do, do this, reduce the amount of parking down on Oregon Street, and all you're doing is driving business to those stores. You're going to have empty storefronts, and you are going to have less people going down to our south downtown, because that's what Oregon Street really is, it's our, our second downtown. And you're going to drive people out to Kohler, and you're going to drive them out to Washburn, and they're not going to shop down on Oregon Street. Try being disabled, try being elderly, try having kids in tow while you're trying to unload, and trying to walk two blocks from the parking lot to a photo studio, to Hobby Town, to Red's Pizza. Attempt to do that, and see how many times you're going to continue to go downtown, down to Oregon Street to do your business. They're going to drive out to Kohler, going to drive out to Washburn, and then you can continue to complain about what big boxes doing to Oshkosh, but they're the only ones that have parking then. So, that's the only place that they're going to go. I think that's all I got for now.
Just one comment, I agree with Mr. Peck and Mr. Mugawar that we've got to increase the parking down there. I think we also have to look at off-street parking. If, if Oregon and that area is going to start growing, which they seem to think it's going to grow, at some point, we're going to need off-street parking, in, in better condition than we have it. I mean, you know, we went through a big study, then we put up new signage for all the parking lots downtown. I think we have to do the same thing for, you know, the, the Oregon Street, you know, good identifiers where the parking lots are, a good code system that we have. And, you know, if, there's only so many spaces down there, and if you're busy, as you said you would be on weekends, you're still not going to have enough on-street parking. So, you're going to need off-street parking, and I think we've got to up our game as far as the quality of those parking lots. I mean, gravel is not, you know, kind of what we like in our city. So, you know, let's, let's increase the parking spaces, let's look at upgrading the parking lots we have, better signage, directional signage, better coding so people know what is free parking, what is paid-for parking, that type of thing. Does council have anything else, other, any direction to staff so they know what, what direction to go? Councilmember Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the council rep to the Traffic Review Board, and just to clarify a couple of things, there was not a mandatory meeting that any of the businesses had to be at the Traffic Review Parking Utility Meeting. It was recommended that if you wanted to voice your opinion to a citizen board, because the parking utility is all citizens. They drive the same streets, park the same places you guys do, but Mr. Mugawar is right, they do look at safety, and that was the biggest concern that they had. And the chair of that committee is actually a DOT certified driving instructor, and he was adamant that adding parking back was going to make that section of Oregon Street very dangerous. Because you're, as, as one of the options was said, that semis won't even be able to get in the turn lane if we put parking all the way back. Is that safe? I get it, it's hard to get to a business when you don't have any parking. And I know you can't carry things to parking lots all the time and things like that, but if we put it all back, it's going to create a problem, and I think we'll have accidents there. It won't be safe for our citizens to drive there. I, I believe, a couple of emails I got, people said if they can't see my store, they won't come. Well, you're, most of those stores are one-item, two-item type store, they're coming for a reason, and they're going to come to that store. Yes, they'd like to park out front, but it, we've mentioned, we've had parking studies done time and time before, and it's a lot of walking problems we have in Oshkosh because we want that front curb service. I was also to support option one at the Traffic Review Board, put some parking back. I still support that. I did vote in favor of leaving it for quite a few other reasons. Think about winter, where's that snow going to go? Now, you're going to have cars parked there besides. So, we, I think putting some back is, is a good compromise, and that, that's a good thing to do. I know I've been accused of being anti-business, but I tried to organize Oregon Street, we tried to get a business improvement district, none of the businesses wanted it. We tried to get an association over there, none of the businesses wanted that either. All want to be independent business owners, all have their own ideas, their own opinions, how they want to run their business, and that's fine. But our role as a council is to make sure that we provide our citizens with safe streets, safe passage, making sure that vehicles that travel in our city can travel safely. It's an arterial street. Remember what we talked about earlier when I said arterial streets? And Mr. Robbie and Mr. Godey agreed that Oregon is a major thoroughfare street. Now, if we can move truck traffic off of 9th and move it to South Park, that's good. One other option, though, is South Park got enough cement for it. Because truck routes have different cement compositions, correct? So, it's not just, say, move the signs, and now that's a truck route. Temporarily, you can get by that way, but the rear, there's reasons to where truck routes are put, and what the concrete is and things like that. And we still assess our businesses a residential rate, even with a truck route on your business. You don't pay that extra for the concrete. So, I think the city has done a lot, and I think we're improving this area tremendously with, with, as Amerisite expansion in the Oregon Street area, I think that's going to happen. We want our businesses to be open and be competitive with the Sawdust District, hopefully somewhere will be coming in there. I think some of the businesses have benefited with the nomination arena and events that they're having, because we have restaurants and we have bars in that area that all benefit. So, my recommendation is, is option one, put a few stalls back, but I, I don't think we can put them all back, because I think we're creating just what we had before, which is vehicle turning issues, stop signs getting knocked down, streets, stop-go lights, they're not on stop signs. And I do think, and the recommendation of the Parking Traffic Board was to improve those parking lots, if we can move the gravel lot up, if it's being used, and, and that, to get it paved and, and done. Usage of our parking lots, have a Pacer rating, Mr. Collins can go into that, and how we evaluate our lots, but if they're not being used, it's hard to justify spending taxpayer dollars, improve parking and other things. You know, so I think you have to work, I think the other option is working with the city and working with the staff. You know, when this project first got brought up, there was going to be one way we were going to do the street and everything, and that was object, you know, there was a lot of objection from the Oregon Street people, which is fine, that's your, that's your right, that's your opinion, you should be able to voice that, and we made changes. Now, we did something different, and we know we said there wasn't going to be a big thing with traffic, but at the time, we weren't thinking about all the parking movements and, and things like that, so, you know, I think even staff at the end. But there's a cost, as, as Mr. Collins said, there's a cost to taking that and changing the striping. A company that did that has to take that striping off, that, who's going to pay for that? We are, city, probably have to cover that cost now. Then there's a cost putting it down, if we can't get it down in time and it wears out right away, who's going to pay for it being redone the following year? So, for every movement, there's another movement and maybe another cost to the taxpayers of the city. So, I, again, I, I support option one, putting some minimal parking back, but I think we need to keep those traffic lanes, turn lanes, and the straight lanes as much as possible and make it safer, not only for just the public, but think about when fire has to get through there, when ambulances have to get through there, when the police department has to get through there. The more congestion, the more things you have, the more dangerous it is for emergency vehicles to operate too. I, I got hit five times as a, as a county sheriff's deputy, and I have my lights on at accident scenes and things, but people don't pay attention to that. And so, people, when they're looking for addresses, when they're looking for businesses, you know, the tighter the movement is, the more opportunities there is to have accidents and issues. But I understand your concerns, and that's why I'll support at least some parking to come back on, as Ms. Byer said, some is better than none. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Crowsey?
I'm going to agree with a lot of the things Mr. Mugawar said. I think parking stalls are vital to that area down there. I mean, it's a smaller-scale Main Street, and the spots you take away impact them even more, especially between 8th and 9th. If we would possibly lose those businesses down there, what do we have? Who's going to come in down there? If they don't have parking spots, if they don't have options for parking, when it is just convenience of dropping into a store right in front of you. I mean, I have small kids, just like Mr. Mugawar does, it's hard to get two or three kids out of the car and walk three blocks, especially in the winter in a Wisconsin-type state. I just think we need those spots down there, as many as we can put back on there. I'll support option number two, it seems like a good, happy medium. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Last comment, I would support option one. It doesn't replace everything, but it does replace some of the parking. You know, it is, no, you, Mr. Mugawar is correct, you can't necessarily compare Main Street to Oregon Street, but then again, you can't compare this to this. The point I was making is that Main Street still lost parking, and that there is off-street parking in Main Street. The concern, and Mr. Crowsey just, just referenced having three small children, I would think that you would want safe egress from your vehicle.
Get them out on the passenger side.
True, but then in the, you know, so, so with that, but again, we, with growth comes change. Change is not something that we, that we deal with well. We want, we want what we had, but we want to get better. So, there are these improvements that are being put in. It is, again, an arterial street, which basically, that's, that's, you know, it's, it's where the traffic flows. If we can look at alternating, at an alternative truck route, that's something to consider. But as Mr. Herman pointed out, we may not have that option because of the street construction. If we do change the truck route, then we may have to go and invest in additional improvements to the street. So, I think option one is the best option in that it does maintain safety, but also returns some of the, the parking stalls. And it's, it's the closest thing to a, it's the best option to address the issue. So, my direction would be option one.
Just a couple of comments. You need direction from us, I'm getting kind of a, sort of a 50/50 split here. I think there's consensus, we have to return parking spaces. We have to be safe. Safe first, return parking spaces. If it's option one or option two, if there's something in between, guy, I don't know. This is, we're dealing with a street and buildings that were built 100 years ago. Same issue with Main Street, it was built before cars were invented. We're trying to deal with your 2018 in a section that was built 100 years ago. So, let's restore it, unless there's objections, let's restore what you can safely with parking, with parking on-street. I think we have to look to the future, and we've seen Main Street come alive again, we're seeing Oregon coming alive again. I think you have to look to the future. We'll only get so many parking spaces on the street in that section of town. At some point, people have to go to parking lots, if they want to shop in that section of town. So, I think we have to look at, what is it going to take to enhance those parking lots, both surfaces and, and signage? So, does everyone feel comfortable with that general direction to staff? Increase the spaces, keep it safe, look at upgrading our parking lots in that area, and the proper signage.
Mr., Mr. Patrick, go ahead, Fitz.
Well, I, I certainly don't want to put council on the spot, especially when I'm filling in for my boss, but it seems to me that there's, there's a split. I don't think, I haven't heard council say that you want to go with the original plan and not restore any parking, but of those council members that have spoken so far, it seems like there are two that are for option two, two that are for option one. And, and again, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but when we bring the proposal forward, we'll have to draft something a little more specific. And if you could see fit to be a little more specific, whether you prefer option one or option two, I think that would help the staff craft the ordinance so we can bring it back to you.
You want us to take sort of a vote?
Well, I guess...
Not an official vote, but sort of a show of hands?
Well...
I guess we haven't, we haven't really heard from Councilmember Palmary, or you specifically, Mayor, you know, which option you might prefer.
Deputy Mayor Palmary?
Thanks for bringing that up, John. I haven't, most of the time, you hear from me on most items, this item, I was not taking part in the discussion because I do have a business relationship with one of the business owners. So, it would not be appropriate.
All right.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of getting back to Mr. Herman's comment about the business association and businesses working together down there. There's, there's, I believe there is a private lot on the corner, on the southeast corner of 9th and Oregon, is that correct? There is another private lot, I believe, on the northeast corner. Is that correct? Looks like there'd be a significant amount of parking there. All within a very reasonable distance of these businesses, which would alleviate some of the on-street parking. Is there consideration of a, of, of working with those people and, you know, is, is, I, I think the city is, is ready to do what we can do, but, you know, oftentimes, people don't want government, they, you know, it's, everybody's against government until they need government, and then as soon as they get their problem taken care of, then government can, you know, then we're going to go on our merry way, and we don't need you anymore. But have the businesses approach the owner of these lots to see if they would be available? Because when I go by there, those lots don't have a lot of vehicles in them. Because when I go by there, those lots don't have a lot of vehicles in them. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I rented the spot, my favorite Stefan's lot on the southeast side of Main Street, and I had a hard time even getting my employees to park there. Number one, the traffic is horrible. Number two, again, my guys are pulling stuff in and out constantly, and that truck traffic is talking about, basically, it's not inviting to cross two or three streets to get across the street. And then the one directly across from us, that one, right now, is home to the two, what, the power buses. And so, those keep up all the charges, but, I don't know, poor decision, and I'm sure it's not one of that property, but, yeah, I mean, I guess if it was my option, and I had money to go out and buy it, I don't have, I don't have to do it, I'm actually, I have enough repairs in my place in the last few, the next few years.
Yeah, is it?
You know, I mean, if it was, if it was my brothers and we wanted to draw lots and lots of traffic down there, it would be to get the city to maybe vacate some of these empty buildings and destroy, put in parking for us, but I realize it's not.
Yeah, and we discussed that. There's one issue related to that, and it's, and asks with a couple of lines through it. You know, regarding getting, you know, employees getting to park and making parking available to your customers, you know, I know that, like, Mr. Clark, who served on this council several years ago, at the time was working for Festival Food, and basically, Festival Food mandates that their employees park in the outlaw, and that if you happen to park closer, you know, you, it's not something that, you know, the business looks at. So, I just wanted to raise those questions and to throw out some options that are there. So, to Fitz's concern, I would, or, excuse me, Mr. Fitzpatrick, give you the respect. I would, as I said, is I think that we'll go as to, my direction would be option one.
Mr. Murgarower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that there's a clear distinction here. We've lost 21 spots. Giving five back isn't giving enough back. Giving five back is a small amount. It's 25%. Maybe, as statesmen, the job of them is to negotiate and to try to find a happy medium and try to have, find a middle ground. There may be some options to get creative a little bit and maybe not get to the full 13 that I want back with option two, but there are some other spaces that we can potentially use a couple of option two, adding them into option one. For example, south of South Park, the option two, the two you have identified, south of South Park, could be two you could add in there that are actually striped. I would also like to hear consideration for actually striping in front of St. Vincent's and adding actual marked spots in front of there. While it doesn't help those that are close to Knight Street, it does help those businesses between 10th and 12th, or even between 10th and 13th, to park in front of the church school and have designated parking there where we currently don't and didn't before. You can pick up a few stalls there. You don't have to take up the full space, but we could potentially pick up one, two, three even in there. Mr. Godey.
When I did the, trying to do the math for it, I basically assumed a parallel parking stall distance in there and actually just assumed that for the council. That space is accounted for in the number of parking spaces available, even though it isn't delineated.
So, it's not marked?
It's not marked, but they were added in the total as being available.
Okay.
Can I speak just quickly?
Sure.
Sir, could you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
Again, I'm Bob Moss from Habbitown. A lot of the problem here, and I know this is where the big fight is, is the least safest place is right on our intersection, but we're the ones that lost all of our parking. So, yes, you know, and I don't want to take away from some of the other businesses, but there isn't very many businesses, and most of the businesses that aren't here, aren't here because we don't need parking in front of St. Vincent's. We need parking in front of, between 8th and 9th Street. And that's, you know, that's where, I'm not asking to have all of it back, and I think there was more than four. It wasn't the same thing, they just weren't marked. We used to have, well, in advance of that, numbers parked there, but we lost everything. Having one spot on that block for the businesses that are there is not, is not sufficient. And if we bring back five spots that are down by St. Vincent's, it's not going to help us. So, we're here because of the section that surrounds 9th Street, and I realize that's the least safe spot out there, but I don't even think that, I think it's still going to be unsafe until they, like the mayor said, is due away with that truck route that crosses there. And I know that's a far stretch, and I know that's not something that can happen overnight, but the reality of it is, is that section there is why there are so many people that are here that are all surrounding that area. Most of the other businesses do lose everything. We lost everything. Thank you.
Thank you. One second. I still have the floor on that one, Mr. Mayor. So, if we can find a way to find somewhere in the middle, between five and 13, I'd be supportive. If we come back with five, I don't know that I'm going to support that. I know you want specific direction from all of us, so I'm getting real specific. I don't know that I would support anything, anything that says five, for myself. And going, last comment, and then I promise I'll shut up. If this was so dangerous before, then it should have been marked and, or re-marked and corrected before construction. I understand it's a truck route. I've lived in the city all my life. I drive it regularly. It's no dangerous now than it was before construction. And so, we made do with what we had before construction. There's no reason we can't make do with slightly less, not a lot less. Thank you.
Fitz. Well, I think the council members have made some great points, and the citizens have too, and it's clear to me that, you know, the council members want to support the businesses as well as the citizens at large and the safety of the citizens. So, maybe I can offer a compromise that would be acceptable to the council. We could go back to the drawing board a little bit, and we could take a look at an additional option that might be a combination of one and two. And what I would propose to the council, if you see fit to support this, as far as direction, you know, we would discuss the idea of bringing back option one, option two, and a compromise proposal. And I would just ask that you allow staff the opportunity to work on that, and they can certainly consult with the business owners if they wish. And the business owners, of course, can talk to us at any time. We're happy to work with them. So, if you give us that latitude, I think we could bring back, then, several options for you to consider. The council member, Alison Osby, will be here then, too. So, I offer that as a way for us to move forward.
Counsel.
Mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Mr. Peck is next.
You know, I agree. Fitz, I think, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I think that's the way to go. The other thing is, there is no fight here. There is no fight. Please understand, there's no fight. We want to support you. We want to support the businesses, and, but, and at the same time, we have to, we have to provide for public safety of the community. So, there is no fight here. There's no us against them. This is not an adversarial relationship. I hope that's understood. And I think that the third option, you know, is good, is trying to bring back parking, as much parking as possible in the areas that need it added or would like it added. Because I do agree with Mr. Murgarower to say you're adding spaces six, eight blocks away. That's a little different than to do that. So, yes, I would support the third way, so to speak, just as long as we don't have to touch the third rail.
Right. I can't promise exactly what it'll be, but I know that staff will work very hard to try to come up with something that is acceptable to all parties.
You know, and I think that that's the key thing, is that working hard to see what can be do to address all the concerns. And again, one of the things that was stated multiple times tonight is, nobody's going to get everything that they want in this, but the best compromise we can make is really what we need to do moving forward. So, thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
I think you have some direction, just one comment. It seems that the major issue as far as loss is between 8th and 9th. You get in front of St. Vincent's, I don't think, you know, we're kind of adding and subtracting areas that don't make any sense. I'm going to go back to the truck thing. Can we restrict the size of trucks that go down 9th? That's something to look at, I think. We've got to, we've got to look to the future, and if it's an area that's, if they're right there, it's going to start growing. I think we've got to look to the future. How do we handle all this? So, that's pretty much my comments, is focus on 8th and 9th, keep it safe, and we have to deal with trucks. I mean, Mr. Herman, you have a light.
Yeah, just one, two quick comments on this. I'd supported option one, obviously, and that was five. Mr. Councilmember Peck did two. The other two council members wanted option two, which is 13. So, to give you that option three, let's go in between. If we can put eight stalls back, maybe Mr. Murgarower would support that somewhere so we can help the other. But, Mr. Godey or Mr. Robbie, either one of you, the main reason Oregon Street was done was due to stormwater flooding issues, correct? And I know that a couple stores, their laterals got, didn't get connected, so I know there was some issue that way, but really, the main reason Oregon Street was reconstructed was for flooding issues or stormwater issues, correct?
Actually, the primary driver was for extending sanitary sewer service further south along Oregon Street to eventually be able to reach the new apartment complex going in at Ripple in Oregon. We currently have inadequate service in the southern portions of Oregon, so it was extending that sanitary service that was the primary driver. Certainly, we did make some significant stormwater improvements and upsizing in the storm sewer, you know, minus the, you know, one unfortunate miss on the lateral, but we made some significant improvements on the stormwater as well, but it was the sanitary sewer that was the original primary driver.
Okay. I guess the reason I bring that up is I just want council to remember and our citizens to remember, it's not always just that small picture that we're looking at. The real bigger picture was the major upgrade of our utility services.
Yeah, and as Steve mentioned, you know, the street did need it as well, but the sanitary service was, you know, one of the things that really drove us to look long and hard at this street.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, you have the direction you need?
Yes, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Next is City Hall meeting room scheduling during elevator modernization project. And by the way, I had a group of high school students here today, and I made them go up the four flights of stairs. We did when I was in high school here, and they couldn't believe, kids had to go four flights of stairs.
They made it?
They did. I didn't. I took the elevator.
Again, we kind of get to the walking issue.
That's right.
Exactly.
That's right. Well, this is a topic that I asked to be placed on the agenda, and just to refresh everyone's memory, we're going to, we need to upgrade our elevator. It's reaching the end of its useful life, and we, so between November 15th and December 31st, the elevator won't be available to the citizenry who need services here and to the council members. So, we talked to the council previously about the idea of moving meetings to the safety building. Now that Winnebago County has vacated that, we think we can put some temporary accommodations up there pretty easily. It won't be very costly. It'll be most convenient for the citizens because they can utilize a parking lot, won't have to drive too far away. We'll be able to televise meetings that were live. We can keep those live because of the close proximity, any meetings that were previously scheduled in that manner. So, before we go forward with that, and I can give the council more information, more detailed information about the meeting schedules and everything else, I'd like to just make sure that you're okay with that before we go any further, because it has been a while since we talked to you about it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it now, or we can give you more detailed information at a later time.
Counsel, any comments? I think the last time we said we're good with the removal of the safety.
Yep, still good. Okay, we'll move forward with it, and we'll get you more detailed information about when the meetings will be scheduled, where they'll be scheduled, all that information. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next is opportunity for citizen statements. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Okay. We'll move on to councilmember announcements and statements. The first is the rental housing advisory board special meeting on October 2nd, 2018 at 6:00 p.m. in room 404 to solicit public input regarding potential inspection program and possible districts. Deputy Mayor Palmieri or Councilmember Murgarower would like to expand.
Thank you, Mayor. As council liaison for rental housing advisory board, this is just a reminder that there is an opportunity for public input on the potential revisions to the rental inspection program and those stabilization districts. As you know, the rental housing advisory board has been operating a little over a year now, and a little while back, I mentioned that there would be forthcoming an action plan by the end of the year. There's a, probably going to be a slight delay as we are gathering this public input with community development, and then, once that comes in, the rental housing advisory board would like to make a recommendation to council regarding the program and those options. So, that's October 2nd, again, 6:00 p.m., 404, and I would invite any tenants and/or landlords or other interested parties in rentals to attend that meeting. Mr. Murgarower?
No, you said everything I was going to say. You know, last time around, public participation wasn't at its best. I think that's a reasonable way to put it. And two-way communication wasn't at its best between, whether it's council staff, property owners, and things like that. This is a great opportunity to interact with everybody who's going to make recommendations to council, interact with staff, and really, really get the feel for what we're suggesting, what we think we would like to do, and we need as much input as possible. So, anybody who can attend, we would love to have you.
All right, thank you. I did add one thing to the agenda, and that is the World War I in song. There's the poster. I've been working with a group from the museum and the university for the past year, developing programs to commemorate the centennial of the end of World War I in 1918. And on the 4th of October, at the museum at 6:00 p.m., there'll be a reliving the World War I in music. There'll be students from Lourdes Academy, Oshkosh North, Oshkosh West, performing. It should be a great program, but it's all the music that was written. One of the biggest authors of music then was, first by name of Cohen, there are others involved, Irving Berlin, but they really wrote the music that supported the war effort during World War I. So, it should be a heck of a good concert, free to the public, and again, it's at the And with that, I will turn this over to our city manager for announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item we have is early absentee voting for the November election, and if Pam could just provide a little information on that, I sure would appreciate it.
Certainly. We will start October 15th, regular business hours, 8:00 in the morning till 4:30 through November 1st, and then on November 2nd, we are open until 5:00 o'clock. Anybody in line, we certainly will process after the hours. Another reminder is to bring your ID with you, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
The next item we had listed here on city manager announcements and statements is a professional services agreement for environmental review services or capital improvement projects in 2019. I know the council members are familiar with some of the vendors that we've used in the past for environmental review. We haven't used Robert E. Lee as much, but that's an emphasis that we are moving We haven't used Robert E. Lee as much, but that's an emphasis that we are moving in that direction to try to explore new opportunities for us to utilize a variety of vendors. So, I think Robert E. Lee has done a good job for us on the projects that they have executed so far, and we're happy to move forward with them as another option for us in 2019. The third item is a professional services agreement with Tyler Technologies for annual maintenance for commercial assessment services. I think the council and citizens are probably familiar with our assessment software and also our other assessment products that we have. Tyler has done a good job for us. We have used them and are very happy with the product that they provide. So, this is just a routine professional services agreement for maintenance.
Deputy Mayor Palmieri?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question on that. As I was reading the staff memo, there was reference to commercial and residential. I believe that this was referring to commercial, but we did say in the staff memo that they were also providing residential assessment. Is that correct?
To clarify, they were the city assessors. They were responsible for everything up until this last year. Now, it's just commercial, and city staff is just doing the residential. City staff is residential, Tyler is commercial.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
And then finally, the final item is just an Oshkosh court update, public improvements. Alan, you want to just touch on that?
Yes. Things are progressing very well on site with the Oshkosh Court project, and we're getting very close to mobilization for the Westfield and Keller extensions and the utilities and stormwater improvements that are planned for the site. So, things are on track to stay on schedule, so things are still looking good.
And Oshkosh Avenue has a whole nother look to it of late.
There's not a tree left.
That would be the private development. That's not on city property. It's not the Oshkosh Court project. That would be Mr. Hoopman and the proposals he's made along Oshkosh Avenue.
Is there some reason they've taken every single tree down? Those are pretty old, large trees, and it's like they're having a firewood sale.
I believe the plans that they have, restore landscaping. At this point in time, you get bonus points if you retain it, but you're not required to retain trees.
Do you get demerits if you take down very large trees? Anyway, that's another issue. If there's nothing else for counsel, I would look for a motion to adjourn in a second.
So... Second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.